Okay, seven o'clock. Bill calls me yours. Our place to be. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty. All right, everybody's been here before, you know where the exits are, and you know all the rest of that. How we doing online here?
We got one online, one online, okay?
So we'll start with the first item on your agenda. Well, first off, Aaron is necessarily absent, he probably will pop in sometime in the middle of the meeting. So, uh, other than that, we have a full board. Uh, through a little minutes, the last meeting, everybody have a chance to read them, any changes? Inspection, one of you approve? And we move by Adrian, second by Tim, any other comment? All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, okay, we have a crew of minutes. For our business, it's pretty simple, we have continued subdivision public hearing. TB 0501, that is twenty-two preliminary forty-eight lots. Re-subdivision public hearing, come on up, give us the latest changes since the last time that we discussed things, and let's move on.
All right, uh, good evening, my name is Chris Schultz.
Thank you.
I think you've had a look here of, uh, have a few other folks from the office in the back. But, uh, Pat Leir is coaching, uh, his daughter's soccer team.
There you go.
That I would pitch it for him. Um, as you know, this development is the last phase of the Farm Brook development.
Yep.
Um, forty years ago, was one of the original approved of this portion, so thirty years. Uh, certainly was a challenge, we bring it up to what's required, sorry, so everything, and, uh, we had a lot of assistance with our design and the supervisor, way to add potential ways to make this work. Uh, we came up with an idea, uh, to generate, uh, the required area for storage by moving out top of it north. And we were very fortunate that the existing, uh, association was willing to work with us to do that. So, uh, we got a plan that frequently will be the only requirements, uh, submitted. We have good review by the county engineer, we've got a few, his, his collateral. We have majority of those items taken care of, there's a few items that slipped that we just need to go through. There were no showstoppers on any of your comments, and we read two, basically everything that was requested.
Cool, okay, let's go to staff, let's see what's going on here. Ron.
Okay, uh, we did complete a coordinated review period with the county agents.
Yep.
There's no objection to the planning board being present in tonight's meeting, and see, and I prepared it for resolution. For that effect. Also, there was a public commentary during thirty day coordinated review, um, no comments were received by the town clerk. So that's good. Uh, I've drafted the part two and three and sent it to you last week.
Yep.
So you had an opportunity to review it. Hopefully there's no, or errors or omissions. Uh, and that's the second part of the mission that you have tonight, and the secret is to accept those parts. And the third part is the, the statements sticker, so easy to prove when the end went to simple. Uh, is a resolution, uh, determining all findings of the criteria that's in section six seventeen point one-two. And with that, uh, a determination of non-significance is proposed for this action. Once we go through those three, then the resolution to approve the preliminary conditions. Now, they discovered that the two lots that are remaining uh, to be part of the Farm Brook homeowners association really should be identified as lots, because they're being subceded.
Okay.
Okay, and so I, I talked to Chris earlier in the day, and that changed the number of lots. Uh, but the other thing that's involved is when I did the typing of the changes, I did a typo, and I didn't catch it, but when the layer did, the owner, and I, I anger for that. Um, there is now a total, I believe, of seventy-three lots, forty-eight in section seven A, and twenty-five remaining in section seven B, which will be all subject to site plan approval, that is for. The actions before you tonight is simply an action to approve the re-subdivision
Correct.
Of section seven A. And get that filed, so that we can move on to the nitty gritty details of design of the stormwater and the water lines and the hammerhead turnarounds and everything else that we need to include in the, you know, site plan approval process. And, and we're doing this two-step approach because the county really doesn't care about the site plan part of it.
Correct.
Alls that are concerned about is getting those text facts, getting those recorded, so they get sent out to bills. Okay, and then, that may be kind of harsh, but that's the reality of this, of the situation. So why file eight or ten pages and kind of place office when they don't? So, um, that's why we're doing a two-step process, and we've done that recently in other applications, some as big as this, some as small as the one lot, the one lot subdivision in the farm plant area.
So the process is we'll do the preliminary re-subdivision, then we'll do a final re-subdivision, then we'll do a preliminary site plan, and then the final site, so there's four actions. Well, three actions after we take the ones that I, the ones tonight off, we'll get, okay.
That sets the tone for making changes, which I assume probably already been made, and the, for the most part, move this on.
Cool, okay, Dan.
Yeah, Ron, I kind of summed this up very nicely, as I always tell you guys, we're drawing lines on a map. This one's a little bit more complicated because we're actually, the lots were there, we're just relocating them more and more lots, uh, which we're doing then because of stormwater. So I really relied on the engineer, and I'll let him speak upon that, but, uh, I, I think we're in a good spot.
Okay.
But as soon as you hear the engineering report, I think they will follow these.
Perfect, well, let's go to highway next, and see what highway has to say.
Um, I really have nothing at this time.
Okay, so you'll be more concerned about the actual, or the site plan.
I'll be more.
Okay, okay, now let's go to engineering and get the scoop.
Uh, so, you know, M R V group did put together a pretty extensive letter, but we reviewed it as if we're looking at a preliminary subdivision and site plan upon it due to the drainage that came with the area. So, you know, we, we went through preliminary checklist, the final checklist, as we typically do in every project that comes before you. Um, just to verify that are we on target to hit our mark as it relates to drainage. I've been working with Schultz for a long time as it relates to the project with the going back and forth. And so the, the short, as I mentioned in the last time we had this before you, is they've designed a project that I believe will be compliant with the stormwater requirements both from M S four standards and the New York State P E C requirements. Obviously, we're going to work through the little things that are allowed to be addressed. Uh, they received our letter, we've already had conversations with both Chris and, uh, Pat, uh, in regards to the drainage comments. But as it relates to the subdivision that's before you tonight in preliminary, I have no issues with that.
Perfect, okay. All right, this is a public hearing. There are basically two issues in front of us. First is the speaker, which is the three different resolutions for us, so it's a stated argument of quality review. And then there's the preliminary re-subdivision, and we're gonna, I'm gonna take public comments on all, all of those items. Do we have any public comments here in the room? And if you think so, do we have anything online? Do we have anyone online that would like to speak for or against this application? Online, anyone like to speak for or against this application?
Um, so it appears everybody's coming off of mute, and I do not have anything in the chat.
So we checked online, we have nobody in the chat, we have nobody coming off mute. So we will assume that there's no one online that wants to speak for this project. So with that, we'll move to the ten, or the board, Tim.
No, I don't have anything on this one.
Get out of here, out of this one.
Adrian. Nope, I don't.
And neither do I. So that puts us in the situation, again, if there's anybody online, pick up now for ever holding fees. Um, we'll go through the process, and the process is, we have a resolution declaring the planning board, the lead agency. I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution after then. I'm sorry, Ron. Isn't that one of these actually closed, isn't that one actually closed? Well, I thought one of them closed the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, many, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Move second, we have moved to second, all in favor? Aye, it's closed, okay. I thought one of the resolutions said something about closing the public hearing. That's just mine, something I read into it, I guess. So, we have a resolution for, uh, lead agency, it was moved to second it, I believe, right?
No, not yet.
Not yet, so do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the speaker, lead agency designated? Motion by Tim, second by, Doug, any other comment? Clark, take a roll call, hopefully.
Inclusion.
Aye.
Of each.
Aye.
Of each.
Aye. Aye. Okay, next item up is a resolution that provides for the acceptance of the fully A F part two and three that we were providing. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution? Move by Adrian, second by, Doug, any other comment? Clark, take a roll call, hopefully.
Inclusion.
Aye.
Of each.
Aye.
Even though I have.
Aye. The next speaker to the resolution is the determination of non-significance, um, based on the E A F part two and three. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution after then?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by, Adrian, any other comment? Clark, take a roll call, hopefully.
Inclusion.
Aye.
Of each.
Aye.
Even though I have.
Aye. Aye. Okay, next item up is the preliminary re-subdivision, uh, approval. You saw a copy of the resolution, I take it, you have any issues with it? Okay, so the applicant had some issues with the preliminary re-subdivision resolution. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution after then? Move by Adrian, second by, Doug. Tim and Doug. Hey, Doug. Clark, take a roll call, hopefully.
Inclusion.
Aye.
Of each.
Aye.
Even though I have.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, next item up, we'll let Dan kick this one off, it's a discussion on Myers R V.
All right, your time. Uh, I have been out to the site with, uh, Matt, who was looking at all their, we are a construction inspector, we write all of the water, sewer, stormwater, all infrastructure down there. The pipe, and, uh, there was some things that were brought to, did we have contention about a week ago, if so, those are all been addressed. So listen, I had at your last planning board meeting, those issues have all been addressed, so.
I'd like to hear that.
But I, I think I would like to give the floor over to the applicant, uh, to let us know exactly where it's at, and I think there is a couple of little things they could talk about, and we'll go from there.
Sure, anywhere you want. And by the way, thank you for taking care of those issues, I know some of them were considered a little titty, but you got to take care of all this.
It's like a creature with my nitty. Um, so where we're at, we're going to have a show coming up Myers, and so they're going to be removing the significant amount of, uh, R V's off the site. That's when we're going to come in, and we're going to, uh, put the buildings with the parking lot level everything out. And it, that's going to happen around the third week, I think it's eighteenth of July. And at that same time, there's the concrete curtain that we're going to finish on the other side of the building, and then we're going to wrap that up with asphalt. There wasn't anything that was part of phase one, phase two that was an addition, but I'm just letting everybody know then when that work takes on, I was going to provide a schedule today, and then that's where we'll run this one.
Go back to the, you said something, Ron, you're going to move them off for what reason? Just to be able to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all camera, okay, so you got a show going on.
And all the R Vs will be off the line, it's all the.
Perfect, okay, and that's what I thought, and I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
He also fills it on the flag, you're like, and that's why you're flagging. So that, uh, the main one cord wired that suspends the flag, it broke today.
Oh, no.
Yeah, and so we're managing that, we're going to have to get a crane out to the site, same thing. I'm sourcing up the crane and everything for our installer, and I'll keep you guys updated when.
That's probably good, because the wind is going to be worse tomorrow.
With the holidays and everything, we want to.
Yes. Wow, that's crazy, yeah, I wouldn't, I kind of didn't think about that, but gotta get a crane and put that.
When we were at college, the wind, no, about, took about twenty people away from the one great case.
Really?
The winds, or the wind with snow that day.
Oh, but I gotta tell you, you gotta get good press, because I can't tell you how many times I see somebody make a comment about that flag. I really do, I see it all the time. It is great to drive by it, and, uh, one of the few flags I will actually salute as I drive by it, just because, you know.
Definitely say the name that too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, thank you so much for that.
So I just want to record on a couple of things that, uh, staff is still working with engineering, uh, we got to get record drawings, even normal things we do have to close out. Uh, so the record drawings, the stormwater pond is still, and Swift is still open, and we'll leave that open until we get the record drawings, and then we'll do an inspection on the stormwater side of things to close it out. And then, of course, we got maintenance going on out there, all insurance.
Okay.
So, I mean, those are going to be guaranteed for two years, so anything that dies or doesn't make it, we want to have it replaced, so. I had that conversation with Doug this morning as well, he is going to continue to be our contact, he knows I'm just done. Um, I also do have a relationship with the store manager and service manager both out there, so between the three, uh, gentlemen, I think we're in a good spot.
Boom. Yeah, okay, that's it on that, well, thank you again for showing up, thank you for telling us what's going on, and, uh, you know, as we've said a million times, communication is the key. Keep Dan up to speed on what's going on, and there'll be a lot less issues, and I appreciate that everybody's saying, it's everybody, I very appreciate it, man. Well, we look forward to a long relationship from you guys.
Um, just so you guys know, um, regulations about parking campers out front, um, service manager is communicating with me about, that's where they leave them for pickup.
Yes.
Um, he communicates to me if something, if they're, I guess somebody's going to get off late at night, or they have an early drop off, you can, or text me about that, so that's been going very well, they're well aware that they can't leave them out there.
Right.
So he tries very diligently to, uh, make sure they're moved and they're not sitting there, um, solve with his customer issues, but uh, I told him again, the whole presentation, if he lets me know that he put it out there, and the customer says, well, I can get there for tomorrow, well, yeah, okay, we're going to let it sit there for a little bit, but we don't mind it there, we're just, okay, and he ought to sit there.
And I guess bringing that up, I did, um, the one driveway that wraps around too much, hands it down. Over, like, over the region, it was a pitless, and now it stops him, you know, so it's kind of hard to get in and out of the driveway that sits there all weekend, too, so.
So.
That probably was just, eh, where, oh, there were, oh, the park along there.
They, they definitely, they get surprise drops to, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we said that driveway there.
There, there, that's a drop area, because they can't go in the back.
Okay, right, all the fence.
Yeah, so they're working very diligently. Part of the issue, and it won't be corrected until they get these buildings out, is the layout. So when all these campers come back, you can actually lay them out, because right now, they've been jockeying around, so they can just go into site work, and so their whole backyard is screwed up, and they'll, they'll be the first one to invent that. As soon as they can get it organized, it will be a lot better, because they'll be able to take those surprise campers that just show up and drop off. They'll be able to bring, go out there, hook them up, bring them to the back.
Right.
Uh, so I've been giving them a little slack, just because the communication has been there, about what's going on out there, I think that's going to be, that, it's just.
That driveway was the drop area, along the edge of the driveway was the drop area, because we didn't want them out front as a drop area, we wanted them in that driveway, I hope. That's what we are planning, I think, yeah, okay.
So, you know, we got to.
Boom.
Finally, you guys will.
They said, you can't.
Yeah.
They'll probably look a lot too, so one, one day, you get there, somebody drops a color on.
So, uh, I, I do have my staff that does, let's get a pretty close eye on that, uh, that, in the neighborhood that we drive a lot, so, um, but again, James texts me pure three times a week about different campers that we had going out, so James doesn't need to.
Oh, I, I just, I thought I'd tell you the chalk and the tire.
Hmm? I'm just saying, I'm just happy that Schultz has done something on the solar farm, so.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. You don't need to talk solar farms anymore. At least not right now, I think. Okay, next item up is open discussion, Ron, what's going on?
Okay, uh, number.
Next guy, have a good one.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, names here.
The conservation board has come up with four signs that are going to be putting up over in three varieties to identify the, uh, uh, guns. As you know, when you approve the subdivision, you preserve those gun ones and put trail around them. And these signs help to, uh, educate the residents of what they're looking at. And I think kudos go to Tim Boyd for designing these, he's done a great job. Took it to, um, public courts and town halls. Yesterday, they both looked at it, no objections, so we'll be authorizing it on the next meeting. And those signs will be going up, so thank you, Tim, for all your hard work.
Nice, by the way, speaking of the conservation board, we had a discussion a lot back, and I totally forgot about it. The conservation board cleans the highway, um, three thirty-two for period of an area, correct?
Yeah, between forty-one and Townland Road.
Between forty-one and Townland Road. And we thought maybe if this board wanted to work with them, we could help them with that, conservation board is very big. And we could help them with that, and maybe even expand it a little bit, but that's up to them.
Well, that, that's.
Right, you're, oh.
Your fault.
Yeah, so I'll be reaching out to the, the chairman, and some, at least I will volunteer, I don't know about you, if you're interested. And they, I think they do it twice a year.
I'm doing it every time.
Yeah, fifty times a year.
Somebody was just out, somebody was just out there last week, and cleaned up from the ninety-six to the true.
That, that's a different group, I forget who, who that's.
I don't know who.
Yeah, states could have some science for that. The knowledge and.
Yeah, we got the board for that, yeah. Okay.
And I'll, and I'll let you know more about it when I come to you.
We get our expenses. Strike.
That's definitely something I own.
Okay, Ron, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Uh, nothing yet on the campground. Tonight, I talked to the seven, um, staff from Manchester there.
Yeah, I'll handle it.
Thank you. And also Senator Helling, and, you know, if you just look in the message, they're supposed to have made decisions already, they haven't. So hopefully we'll hear something in the near future. Uh, Auburn Melo, section seven, eight, that's for the, which is the last section going in. Ian and I went out and discovered that the design that they had come up with for the stormwater pond is too close to the trail. So we coordinated with Emily Smith from Fisher Associates, the engineering director of the trail project. And, um, Tim and Peter sent an email back, while they're saying redesign the pond, provide us additional shoulder for the trail. And we want some kind of security fence with lit rail or whatever along that pond to keep people from going off the pond, out the trail into the pond. So we're waiting to hear back on that one. We did receive the traffic studies for all three parties, G and A.
Aye, aye.
And now I have to, um, set up a meeting with C D O T to talk about these equity issues. Um, been working with Dan and John on zoning amendments for flat space zoning definitions. And we're going to be dealing with air, B and D next. Um, the farming and market center was sent back to the county for a second time as a class one action with the traffic data. The N T O D is going to be updated, we met with Lance and Dan this morning on that. Um, the map was last done in twenty seventeen. Since then, there's been a lot of changes to that map. And we've realigned some of the N T O D founders, seem to make better sense, but we'll be bringing that back to the town board, and you guys take over that. Um, the, uh, one of the things that we, I did with the powers property over there that is out there trying to figure out what they're going to do was to prepare a report on the incentive zoning amendment that we've, uh, received since two thousand, I think it was eight.
Right.
And, uh, there's been millions of dollars in benefits to the town. Um, we also, as a result of this, discovered some things that we forgot were in there. One of them is the installation of streetlights along Commercial Drive from ninety-six up to the that, or incentive zoning townhouse project. We talked with Frank, the police, I did, and Frank has ordered those lights, so they'll be coming in uh, later, ensuring will be installed and sold. Uh, just aside more than Frank, aside this morning, uh, we finally got kind of free delivered last Saturday. So I'm working on an agreement that came from Buffalo, or Batavia, I'm sorry. And there was a hundred and sixty dollar charge per truck additional beyond what they had. And the cost of the category was more than what they had. He does have the street bench already, fully onto that to put in, so that, that's good. And then finally, Dan and I prepared a letter, and Dan sent it out to the property owners who backed up to Auburn Trail and the April Big Park between Eckerman Drive, Eckerman Way, and Elmwood Road, Elmwood Circle. Informing them that, okay, guys, you got to get the buildings and debris and R Vs and everything else that you've stored on Town Parkland out of it. So, uh, that's coming up. Dan is already starting to get some balls back on that. So.
Oh, but we, that, that's, that's, are you? Are you?
Yeah, exactly.
We were told we could borrow forever.
So that, that's kind of all that I have, and there's more in the, uh, before, which you get.
Cool, thank you, Dan.
I don't think Ron had much to talk about, but, uh, let's start with your next meeting. Um, Loomis Road Industrial Park, uh, coming back in for their final subdivision reapproval is their timeframe expired, so pretty much that should be straightforward, they've already approved this one. They have made the updates that were done in provision, so it should be a straightforward approval. Uh, the next one is Blackwood Industrial Park, same situation, their period's expired, they need a reapproval, they have plans, they have all the updates, county county updates, M R V updates, they're all on there, so it should be a pretty straightforward resolution. Uh, and that just pushed out mainly because of town, town changed their mind at the last. And the applicant was a little confused, because he thought his timeframe had started to leave, got everything addressed with the county, but it started when you guys approved it.
Right.
So, uh, but this all been addressed, again, these are both coming to us for a reapproval. The question I have on those two, before I continue on with the schedule, is, does this board want part copies in your packets for the digital? The question I got on those two before I continue on with the schedule is, does this board want part copies in your packets or would a digital be good?
Digital, digital. I don't agree here, so hopefully.
Yeah.
Well, and the reason I agree with you came in, well, they came in and instead of getting the normal amount of copies, I agree that's for a very minimal amount. They should have pulled them out of my payment. If I needed more, I would tell them, but. Okay. All right. Then the other project is Nate Powerman's Crowley Road Two Lot Final Subdivision. And then we also, you guys allowed him to do the preliminary. Site plan for that. So you'll do the final subdivision first and then you'll see him. The very next line item would be the preliminary site plan. You have approved the subdivision first before you can pack up some type of site plan. And then that's that meeting. Right now, we're looking at your second meeting of July would be compliance, which would be safe place storage. And I think that you continue from the previous meeting, which I don't see anything that would continue. Uh, with safe place storage, um, which is going here in a second, it does have a carry on. He has to have Doug and Aaron adjust the landscaping before he has submitted a plan. But if you guys are going to go with the landscaping, I'm not going to commit to this board. It doesn't make sense. So, uh, we had given him some timeframes. We saw them emails of when he actually did it all worked out. And if there's any changes to what he has submitted, I'd have a new plan submitted by that date. So I can say I'm applying it for you guys.
Otherwise, it goes in on this thing.
Well, it's, it's going to be pushed off. Yeah, I did. Okay. Yeah. So we're starting from one end. I'm, I'm hoping that it's, it's going to be pretty easy. It seemed pretty easy going, uh, Lance talked to them. The other, there's two issues. That was one. The other issue was the stormwater and Lance, do you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah, so we all, as, as the board is aware, I'm going to be returning to town where to identify the location of the forest me. And so we sent him, I don't know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, uh, our, our, our spot locations and then the depth. So that he can then map out his project where they verify whether or not we have our minimum and our requirement of eighteen inch separation between pipe and the forest me. He did submit plans to the town. We did a quick percy review. It didn't look as if there was a profile on there. I called him immediately after this morning. He walked me through plans again. He was hidden in one of the corners of the project. So I looked at it and it showed that he was complying with home requirements, which is providing eighteen inches of cover between the pipe and forest me. I alluded to him that, you know, we're going to forward that over to the town water superintendent for his review. It's possible that he might want to try to achieve greater separation if possible. I then followed up with a phone call back to him this afternoon because, well, what we, what we determined is that the calculation was off. And he wanted to, because I had asked him to give me, it was a plus or minus. I said, I want to know exactly how, how much room we really have because it was less than eighteen. We wouldn't approve it. It wouldn't be, it would, we wouldn't be able to approve it without making modifications to it. So through this calculation, he realized he was off and that he believes it's probably more like nineteen to twenty inches of separation. So he's making the revisions to the counts, revisions to the plans and going to submit them by that due date that the answer earlier, I mentioned earlier. Um, and so that will, assuming he meets that eighteen inches or greater. I don't have an issue with it forward. It'll be, it'll become more of, as the water superintendent prefers something greater, which point we can reduce to one point, uh, two points. Training is just going to work right away. That's not a problem. Just him updating his calculations to demonstrate it.
So it sounds like that because the non-issue, the only issue outstanding would be the landscaping to prevent him from not being, um, delighted. Ron, he's got it updated, right? You said that? Definitely. Okay. Or will be stopped.
So make sure that both Aaron and Doug get the landscaping piece up for sure.
Hi, Ryan.
Ladies.
The chair file, but I want to get an email. Oh, okay. It's already uploaded. I, I didn't look for that in the. I think it is. Okay. I'll, I'll take a look then. I'll double check. Okay.
Ron, you had.
Do you know?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, concerning safe place, just so you know, the town board last night did appoint. A new superintendent of water and sewer.
Oh, okay.
The gentleman is coming from the city of North Dakota, London.
Okay.
He's had a lot of experience and credentials, which is good. Um, he is supposed to be showing up and starting work sometime in July. And the only reason I'm bringing this to your attention is he may, well, take a look at this.
Right. Okay. Well, hopefully Stan will get it too. Make sure he, you know, when he comes on board, hopefully he goes around and he's. All the things you discussed, but I think that's young and really big and he's kind of hanging out there writing up water and sewer that I can think of.
With, with this.
Yeah. Again, again, the plan is demonstrating as presented by today, that he's fully compliant.
Right.
With that, that cross. He believes he's got more room, so he's going to provide us updates. We'll demonstrate that.
The other thing, I just wanted to comment on, we, July twentieth meeting was to be. If you continue to be public variance on the special use permit and preliminary site plan for lot four. Uh, of the industrial park and conditions.
Yeah, Ron, Ron's right. I didn't hear the full list what's on the plan and property, uh, but that would be the other big project. So we were trying to get all the small ones on July six. And safe place and lot four and the sub use.
Are they going to be ready to move forward with that?
They say they are because, um, they are on track to get the subdivision. The plan worked on July sixth, so then you guys can add, um, the preliminaries and sub use. So, uh, they decided not to change their application way back from when they submitted. So we actually already have their application. Uh, the only thing we were waiting on was elevations. And, uh, we should have those by the end of the year.
Since it's been so long. You want, we, we send it to, electronic is fine, I think, for everybody, unless you, well, you're not going to be hearing. Right? And I want to check with Aaron and see if he thinks okay with electronic, but I believe he is, but.
If anytime that you want to print it, this is helpful.
I understand.
We're, we're going to keep pushing more and more electronic, but if there's something that you say, oh, man, I, I really didn't hear it copy, let me know. We'll get it printed and right out to you.
So that kind of brings up another side note that we were just talking about earlier. There is no reason for us to have to have a code book anymore since it's all online. So many of us have wanted to turn in our code books and turn in code books, correct? Yeah, because we have it all online anyway. Actually, easier to use online because you can search for things. You know what I mean?
Our, uh, building office is kind of default through the outline book a lot, so.
Yeah.
The only thing on the conscience about using the online is the flag. The code, when general code hits the local law that's been filed.
Mm-hmm.
Just not sent over to general code till we get those state, come to state.
Right.
This, uh, filed with state and then however many months it takes to get that.
Actually, I'm starting to see it up there before I even get the packets for the insert.
Oh, is that right?
So I, Ron's right though. There is times, but if you're not, I'm putting all your inserts in, the online probably your best bet.
Yeah. When I get somebody. Because all I got is the last one I picked.
Sheriff does it for twenty-five dollars an hour. That's the only thing that's gone. I've got too much to do right now. Dan keeps giving her all.
He already escaped. Yeah. Okay, real quick. Anything else, Ron? Dan, anything else?
No.
Uh, not much for me other than, uh, Townline Road finally been paved.
Very nice.
All the side roads have been paved. And I'd like to think that it will be done mature. There's still a lot of work to be done on there, sidewalk. Back one. So, so, so work to be done, but at least it's paved. Still taking a lot of time.
Cool. Any else? Lance?
Same here, not much. I think the other, everybody else covered everything. We are working on the N T O D stuff that Ron mentioned, so that's going to be a little bit of a process. But I think the end product will be much nicer than what we, uh, what we're currently dealing with, so.
Um, boom.
We'll see how that goes.
All right, I'll look. Anyone still online?
Uh, yes.
Anyone online like to make a comment? Public comment period. Anyone online like to, may like to make a comment? Okay. Um, from my standpoint, it's been really pretty quiet a couple of weeks, um, you know.
Full work ethic.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. I shouldn't even say that. I know, I know. Let's say that.
I already said that, man.
Yeah. So other than, the board have anything?
I got it.
Okay.
In, uh, Dollar General?
It's, uh, still there. I'm not exactly. They're heading up higher now.
No timeline on moving forward?
Um, there is. Um, they're making some progress. We had some issues with paperwork. They have got that resolved. Uh, we will be issuing the demo for this week. And I believe that it's going to go for the funding first, where that you start coming down.
Once it's done, is there, are they planning to turn around and rebuild the same or we don't need them?
Have you seen how long it took me to get the job all of it?
I don't know.
Uh.
I mean, at least a vacant.
So they're taking, there's a slap there. So they're taking it down. Uh, the original conversations were that they were going to put one right back up in the same booklet. Uh, that's the page opposite of the practice board is.
Same design too, I assume.
Uh, we haven't seen one. Uh, they were really done a whole ramp of the fire and then they were really laughing. Uh, and they tried to send the contractors a couple of times without purpose itself, but then they were absolutely for that, so.
And then, um, GLM that's moving along, I see a little bit over there.
Uh, they have been doing a lot of site work. Um, they actually hydro seeded out front, so hopefully maybe this rain tomorrow. We can do some vegetation, grass, we're all good out front, so.
Yeah, it'll be good rain.
Yeah, that won't be a good rain.
Probably not coming.
It's probably just the wrong kind of rain for them.
Probably, but it's, it was good to see that they released hydro seed and not true.
And then Frank said, he's had trouble with the factory, they're like, that's a bad sign.
He's having trouble with every, so. In the, in the, 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 everything is a whole screw up. And he was in the office and we had a good conversation, but.
We can't imagine all the other looks is tense or something like that.
Well, it's just kind of, uh, kind of, it's kind of very eager to get in, but they know it's not his fault either. And he, Frank was very honest, so that's not being way over budget, uh, but their level probably offers.
In fact, the next. I see the hotel is coming for a little too.
The hotel is starting to look nice. I mean, they're.
You heard any more about the one up on the hill?
We're working on it.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I got so, I've been wondering.
We had some issues, um, they might be back in front of you because the new owners want to change the reuse a little bit.
Uh, a little bit?
So there's more to come.
We're going to add. I was probably going.
I'm, I'm already getting a little bit of sun, sun damage and trying to work through the.
Any other?
No, that's a, it's one of them.
I, I just wanted to make a general comment. I see that they've done a lot of earth moving and cleaning up of the shoreline replacement along Collat there. I would hope that they stabilize that as quickly as we require other groups to stabilize that.
Well, I was hopeful that they would have. Stabilized it already while that or, you know, a lot of the, the yard work that they should have reacted about that.
Yeah, but it looks like they've done some of that.
They have, and it's, this water department has been backlogged and they've been circling back. But usually they are fairly decent buckets and seated. I mean, I know that they have the strong sheet too, that, or that your machine.
That's actually, uh, Ontario County Water and Sewer's strong sheet.
Oh, uh.
Not even ours.
I know.
We just store it for them and when they want to use it, they come get it.
But normally I, well, I see after a project or thing, uh.
See, I don't know how strong.
Just make a general comment that certainly we're interested in them stabilizing as soon as possible since we require other. Commercial entities to stabilize their problems.
We, we talk about that a lot. I mean, I know that Ted has, even I've gotten caught. Yeah.
And jealous, so.
Uh, they don't. I, I, but I will relay that.
Remind them that it's very obvious that's for location for sure. Some of them may be not so obvious, that one's really obvious. Anything else?
No.
Yep. Okay, anyone have anything?
I have one thing for you, Ron.
What?
Somebody keeps messing with your title.
I know, it keeps stopping.
I saw it last night. I said something to Dr. Heaton and straight that.
I see, I see it's back straight.
It's back straight. I don't know who's messing with it.
I don't know. Somebody's messing with it.
I see.
Yeah, I know.
He's tapping. He's here so many times a day.
It's. Most injured by Tim, second by Doug, all the paper. All right, thank you.